This meeting of the Gazzin City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Ankles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we seek your face, we come this afternoon, this evening, just thanking you that your presence will be known here. We thank you that you have blessed us and we give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise. Father, we pray that the meeting that we do today will be done decent and in order and that we will do the things properly that you would ask us to do to serve the people. We thank you for all the city officials. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 20th.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 16th through the 22nd.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Have a proclamation for Coach George Baker and anybody that he wants to bring to come up here to the podium. This Baker or anybody that wants to come with, welcome. Y'all must've been pretty sneaky surprised, Coach, like. I bet he thought he was coming to a meal. Anyway, this is a good thing right here. Whereas George Edward Baker was born to George P. and Louise J. Baker on October 28, 1939, in Gazzin, Alabama, the oldest of seven boys. George attended Gazzin Public Schools where he excelled in football under Coach Lawrence Presley and graduated from Carver High School in 1958. Whereas George Edward Baker received a football scholarship to Alabama State University where he lettered in four sports: football, basketball, track, and swimming, and graduated in 1962 with a Bachelor of Science degree in physical education and a minor in social science. Whereas George Edward Baker returned to his high school alma mater and served as assistant to Coach Presley in football and basketball from 1962 to 1970. When Coach Presley moved on to an administrative position at Gazzin City High School, he requested that George Baker be appointed head coach of football and basketball and track. His first year as head coach was his last year at Carver High School's existence. Coach Baker went to MS Sansom High School as an assistant coach in football in pursuit to a federal court decision was made head basketball coach. He had many successful seasons and in 1992, basketball team became the only one in MS Sansom history to win the state championship. Coach Baker received many honors and recognitions, including the MS Sansom Wall of Fame, the Etowah County Sports Hall of Fame, the Alabama State Hall of Fame, and ISTAP, an athletic alumni sport program at Alabama State University. Coach Baker retired from coaching in May 2001, but continued his work with the City of Gazzin as manager of the Sixth Street Swim Pool. A room at the Carver Community Center was named in honor of Coach George Edward Baker. Therefore, I Sherman Gaitan, Mayor of the City of Gazzin, do hereby proclaim the city council, October 28, 2015, is George Edward Baker Day in the City of Gazzin and congratulate him on all the occasions of his 76 birthdays and honor his many years of service and his strong leadership as an educator, coach, and excellent role model in our community. And I can say from a personal note, I've known him a long time myself, and actually, we had some pretty good ballgames together then with Coach.
Thank you, Mayor. To Mayor Sherman Gaitan, council members, people that came out to support me, I'd like to recognize them. My two brothers, the ones that are here, live in the city. Larry Baker, will you stand? Jimmy Lorenzo Baker, will you stand? I also would like to recognize Larry's wife, Diane. I also would like to recognize my brother-in-law, my wife, brothers, the Sizum Boys, Kenneth Sizum and John Sizum, will you stand? And Coach Mary and Sandra, that's in the family. And I'd like to recognize one classmate of mine, a mighty class of 58th Carver High School. Now, what was amazing about this class, there was 104 of us, 108 of us that graduated. Out of the 108, 35 boys, the rest of them was girls. So you know, we had a good time. And I'd like to recognize my classmate, Francis, will you stand? Not many of us left, but, and God has been good to me. I'll celebrate my 76th birthday tomorrow. And again, it's an honor to achieve this award. Again, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I do have something else for you, Coach. Don't give out many of these. First, I got you a pin here, City of Gazzin lapel pin, but I also have a key to the city that I'm giving you. I tell them all I did change the locks when I got in. But if you want in, you call me, I'll get you in, trust me. So we're proud of you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thanks to all the councilmen. I know you had, you could've rejected, man, Billy Billage left, but you didn't, and thank you again.
David, I can't let Coach Baker leave without telling him how much I really appreciate Coach Baker. He takes care of Walnut Park Community Center. I go by there every now and then, see him out there at the community center. He treats all those children over there just like they're his own. He makes sure they mind and they do what he says to do, and he's just an inspiration to everybody in Walnut Park over there. And I appreciate you, Coach, for all you do over there in Walnut Park.
Congratulations, Coach. I figured we would let this go through since Coach Gaitan and I beat you enough when we were in high school. We beat up on you enough. But I really do appreciate, Coach Baker's a longtime friend of the family, and I'll just, you know, without belaboring the point, Coach Baker's a trendsetter in so many different ways. You know, not only, again, as the proclamation mentioned, did he secure the head coaching job at MS Sansom High School after the federal lawsuit, but once he stepped into that role, he made some changes. One of the changes that's most notable for me is that he mandated that if the Gazzin Officials Association were, if they were going to work his games, they had to send at least one minority official there. And he was the first coach to do that and mandate it. And that is a practice that, as I understand it, continues for some schools. So Coach Baker, we appreciate that. That trend allowed my father to spend about 15 years, I think, officiating basketball. So he thought he was pretty good at it, I think. We really appreciate him, and of course, I can't stop talking about Coach Baker without mentioning that he's also a Kappa Man, so he's a fraternity brother of mine as well. So we really appreciate him. Yeah, I had to say that.
I did want to recognize another person, I know practically everybody, but this one is one of the important councilmen from the City of Attala. He does run around with Larry Means, who are the mayor. I guess that's a good thing, but I want to tell him, Willard, hold your hand up there. There you go. Been around some trips with him back a long time ago, but he's, does a good job in Attala, and we appreciate you working with us on the jail. Sure do. Yes, sir.
I just want to say congratulations to Coach Baker and thank you for all that you do for us and the city as a whole. And your family got you up here, and it was still a surprise, but Councilman Cannon over there trying to tell you what was going on. I had to go over there and pull him away from me. So thank you again, Coach.
And I'd like to also say this, I've officiated some of his basketball games, and those were exciting days.
Exciting's not the word I'd use.
Me either, but we're on television, so I can only use that. Just congratulations, Coach. Well, Billy, you- Coach Baker, he was one of them you took off the list when he couldn't come. Coach, I noticed when you came up here, when you had those speeches, you did call his name first. So we've all watched him referee before, we know how he was.
All right. All right, now, item number 8A is unfinished business. It's an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 10, regarding time period dogs or cats may be held at the Humane Society and managed care of feral cats. This ordinance was tabled for 14 days on October 13th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'm going to ask you to table it for seven more days so we can get the new ordinance written up where we could vote on it. Some changes.
Okay, we have a motion to, we have a motion to table this for seven days. Do you have any discussion? We have a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the ordinance for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Item number 8B, this is the nuisance property at 1027 Fourth Avenue have already been abated, therefore no action by the council is needed. This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 2415 James Street in District 1, Gary Wallace Malone and wife George Mae Croft Malone being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in October, a year ago. There've been no improvements, so there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 213 Eighth Street North in District 2, Ulyss Earl Parker and wife Connie L. Parker being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come on up, sir. Step to the podium and give us your name. Give us your name and address.
My name is Ulyss Earl Parker. I preside at 3677 Lakefront Drive in Southside. The property in question, I've been working on it, interior of it, and it has minor cosmetic damage that needs to be repaired on the outside. I got set back on it, I've been trying to work on it, got set back, I had fire bypass award valve replacement, and then I had to turn around and have both knees replaced. And that's held me back, but I plan on repairing the property as soon as possible.
All right, thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of 2013. There've been no improvements, no visible improvements. There was a building permit taken out in July of 2013. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 446 Jacksonville Street in District 3, Otis Adams Jr. being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Just give us your name and address, sir.
Otis Adams Jr., 1046 Tuscaloosa Avenue. I want to say that I know it looks pretty rough on the outside, but I've been working on the inside, and I got sick, and I've gotten better now, and I've been working on it, and I just haven't got a permit lately, and I came to get one the other day and stuff, but I know that was a little late, but I've been working on it, and my son's going to start helping, so it'll make it go a little faster. So I appreciate it if you'll give me a little more time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2013. There've been no improvements, there was a building permit taken out in September of 2013. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to say something first before I make a recommendation. I just talked to you, you said that you knocked the back of it down to make a patio, you was going to make a patio, but looking at those pictures, that doesn't look to be the case. So I'm going to have to change what I told you out there, I was going to give you more time, but those, that's awful. I'm going to move to abate.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1175 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, the State of Alabama and heirs of Margaret W. Milliner, Ingrid Cha Cha Delvante Collins, Derek Miller, Orlando Milliner, and Destani Milliner care of Ingrid Cha Cha being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burn house. We started it in June of 2012. There were two permits taken out, one in 2012, one in 2014, also demolition permit taken out in 2014. There've been no improvements, we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 316 Greatest Street in District 6, State of Alabama and the estate of Inez Duncan Minton being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of 2014. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 508 Howard Place in District 6, the estate of Claude L. Hart III, Paul Perry, and Paul D. Perry being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our process in May of 2014. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
This actually is the house I was talking about, up on, in Precouncil Creek today, Brian. This is one of them, and one next door, too.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 514 Howard Place in District 6, the estate of Claude Leon Hart III being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this process in May of 2014. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 918 North 36th Street in District 7, State of Alabama, David K. Green, and Community Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started the case in May of 2013. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items number 17 through 20 are all public hearings related to resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have four locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 309 Lake Street in District 2, Ira H. Hand III, 911 Martin Avenue in District 2, State of Alabama, Hugh N. Cochrane and Ruth P. Cochrane, 3203 Sansom Avenue in District 6, State of Alabama, Johnny Kane and Rose Marie Kane, and number five, Winona Avenue in District 6, Carrie Ashley Gilbert and City Financial. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Item number 21 is a resolution awarding bid number 3298 for crushed stone. There were no bids submitted, therefore the NEAPA coordinator has negotiated with Vulcan Materials as they are the only local provider of crushed stone. Materials as they are the only local provider of crushed stone. The price varies per size of stone. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second. So moved.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have several, but I'll start with, this is a request from the engineering department and I ask for unanimous consent. This is concerning a bid that will go to the Watson Sun for the Peyton Avenue Storm Water Drain Repair Project.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a project that budget at $54,000.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, I have from Parks and Recreation and this is something that's beneficial to the city concerning bass fishing. It's one that authorized agreement with the Alabama Student Angler Bass Fishing Association for a fishing tournament and it's gonna be held May the sixth through the seventh, 2016. I have one for the Couche Landing, April the thirtieth, 2016, and this is a bass angler for a tournament. And also we have one that's going to be August the thirteenth, 2016. And this is a bass tournament. And I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider three resolutions today as new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is one of the tournaments. This is where we are hosting and it's at $14,000. There's another one for the Couche Landing for $2,000 and $1,000. And the great thing about this is that this will be an impact for the city economy. And over at the Couche Landing, I know most of you don't walk at 4:30 in the morning, but I do downtown. And this weekend, the place was covered with boats coming in, so it's an impact on the city. And it's good for the city and the economy of the city that we are hosting and we have families coming in. And I think the biggest one would be where this is a tournament for students, a bass tournament for students. And so you have students coming in, plus you have their families, so it's good for the city. It was...
Councilwoman Toles, I think you might have left one out.
I didn't have, I didn't bring with me, so if you have yours...
I have right there. Let me pass it down to you. When she was talking, the clerk was talking about three, I knew we had four there.
This is one that's gonna be held April the second, 2016, and it's also a tournament and it'll be held at Couche Landing. So there's four bass tournaments that will be held here in the city, which will be good for the economy.
So we'll see. We have a motion to consider three. We have a motion to consider three.
I'd like to add and add, and then to add the fourth one.
All right. All right, so we have a motion to consider all four of these and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the four resolutions concerning the fishing of tournaments, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, is there any more new business?
I have one, Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent to authorizing acquisition of property in the Goodyear Square Edition. This is in East Gadsden on East Broad Street. It was a little piece of property that was, didn't have a deed to it. They thought they had a deed when they bought the property. And so now we're having to go back and pay $8,000 for this piece of property and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to consider. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I will say that's a small lot next to most of the property we own across the street where the Jack's property is. I think there's only two parcels there that we don't own, so it's in our benefit it does to us.
All right, just to echo the mayor's point, it's been, we've been told on more than one occasion by those interested in developing in that area that it behooves us to be in ownership of that property. So that's one of the reasons why the city is pursuing it. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two requests from EMA. Ask for unanimous consent to authorize an acceptance of a mini grant from CERT in the amount of $418 to purchase fire extinguishers.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more. It's just amending the budget for fiscal year sixteen by increasing the amount, special projects in the amount of the $418 to reflect the mini grant from CERT for the purchase of the fire extinguishers.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, Shane?
Yes, on behalf of Rebecca Duke at the Gadsden Museum of Art, she couldn't be here, had a board meeting today, but asked me to announce the, and invite you all to the grand opening and ribbon cutting for the hands-owned children's gallery at the Gadsden Museum of Art there on the first floor. That'll be held Thursday at 3:00 PM and it is definitely kid-friendly, so bring your, bring your kids along. So I don't guess that applies.
Who is that? Is that the mayor?
Sir?
Oh, you're not the mayor.
No.
You didn't tell us your name.
I'm sorry. Shane Ellison. Rebecca had a foundation meeting today or she would, she would be here, but I went today at 2:00 and thought the ribbon cutting was then and was obviously wrong, so I'll go back Thursday for the event. So anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Shane. All right, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor?
I would just say one thing along with what Dr. Toles said about the fishing. The one for the high schoolers last year, I think they had, they feed them and there was like right at 800 people here and they'd come in like on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and practice and, or Friday, they have the tournament Friday and Saturday and the way in. And there's a lot of people here and they're all staying in motels. Some of the wives and mothers are shopping, they go out to eat. So it is, all these fishing tournaments are, we have a lot of good fishing here and people like to come here, so we benefit from that.
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes, I have an announce, I have an announcement here and it's about open house and it's for span of Edgewark County and this is helping, this is a group that's been helping youth since 1981. And they invite you to the open house and it's at the, oh well, Gadsden High School, not the new high school, but Gadsden High School. And this is a special program for achievement. It's networking and it really helps to prevent incarceration of at-risk students. So they're asking you to come. Open house is from 11:30 until 1:30. That's Wednesday, October the 28th at the Gadsden High School, spam of Edgewark County. And also just to add to what Mr. Ellison said about the Gadsden Museum of Arts, they have a display or they have an art collection of the Tuskegee Airmen. And that would be a good art exhibit for you to go and see. I was fortunate enough to go to the Southern Flight Museum this past weekend and it talked about the red tails, it talked about the Tuskegee Airmen and the airplane. So that's a good exhibit for everyone to go. And I hope that the schools will allow their students to go and see Tuskegee Airmen's at the Gadsden Museum of Art.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toles. Mr. Ellis? Councilman Worth? Councilman Bill?
Yes, I'd like to announce that on Monday, November the second, I'll have a District Five Council, Community Meeting. It'll be at 5:00 to 6:00 at the library. Everybody's welcome to come and voice your opinion about things in our community. I also would like to announce that the mayor went down to Gadsden City High School and those girls embarrassed him real good down there. And so he won't go back again.
Councilman President, I would, I would be amissed or revented in not saying, I knew the Baker family all my life. I grew up under Coach Baker. We went to the same church. So congratulations on your birthday and to all my friends out there, even my sorority that's out there, Pat McGee. So congratulations and thank you for everything that you've done. You even helped me a little when I was at Donahue's, so I appreciate you.
Councilman Reed, or I'm sorry, Councilman Candy?
Thank you. I just want to announce again, Treats on Wall Street will be Thursday night. It starts at 5:00, it ends at 7:00. Alabama City Historical Society is planning on giving away 1,100 hot dogs, so the hot, so come and get the hot dogs while they last. They're doing 1,100 Thursday night. There'll be candy, face painting, jump your toys for the, bounce your toys for the kids. Everybody's make sure they came out, come out Thursday night, 5:00 to 7:00, Alabama City on Wall Street. Also want to remind everybody that Saturday is Trick or Treat, Halloween. Our police force will be out in force, so please, please, please obey the law, watch for the children going down the street, drive careful, drive slow, and just obey all the rules. That's all I got.
Councilman Reed?
I think I'm the only one up here that didn't congratulate Coach Baker, but I do. I was president of S Club over there a couple of years when you were there. I got out of high school, I was 6'6", 195 pounds, playing center, and all we did was crypt shots and throwbacks. When I watched him practice one day, I knew I was not a basketball player. I mean, they flat knew how to play basketball. Congratulations on today, but more so for that. I appreciate it.
All right.
So, so again, I do want to congratulate Coach Baker on the, on the many accolades. They're well deserved and we really appreciate your many, many years of service. And I also want to, you know, recognize the Sizemore family. We almost got a whole row of Sizemores over there. So my, my, you know, my father talks often about his affinity to the Sizemore family and just the, the impact that they had on him. So I really always appreciate you and to the point that the mayor made earlier, we do have a former, former council member. Coach Baker, do you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, one other thing, I should introduce my family, brothers, and friends, but one of my main friends, one of my best friends ever had, I miss his name, James O. I miss him, but I want to include his name. He's elevated him.
That's right. Absolutely, absolutely. And Mr. Thornton used to live in my district and, you know, one of the things I, you know, I said this before, but I'll say it again while he's here. He, he raised one of the concerns that, that's been talked about in terms of no, us being notified when individuals move out of our district. Mr. Thornton, you know, was kind enough to, to reach out to us and say, hey, councilman, I don't want this to reflect negatively on you in, in any kind of way. Just wanted you to know I moved, I moved out of your district. He didn't have to do that. He could have continued to serve and not said a word, so. And when he stepped up and decided to, to resign, of course, it, it hurt him because he, he was really a good member of that board and they, they missed him. So we appreciate your service and I just take the opportunity to say that to you publicly. And of course, you know, Ms. Baker, she native, thank God for y'all for putting up with him all these years. We really appreciate y'all. I do want to recognize also Chester Williams and Francis, his wife Francis. Chester is my, is my wife's, I mean, I'm sorry, my wife's, my mother's brother. And of course, you know, his mother, of course, is, if you know anything about me, you know that his mother is the one human being on this earth that's touched me more than anybody when she was here. That was my grandmother, Della Allen. So it's just good to see y'all here. We appreciate y'all coming out. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say you're here to support me as well as, as Coach Baker. We appreciate having y'all here. And of course, everybody, I know, know just about everybody out there, so we do appreciate y'all if I didn't, didn't call your name. And one last piece of recognition, of course, it was noted last week that Litchfield High School will be marching in the parade at the Majesty Classic this week, this weekend. But what was not noted was that we have a member of our council who was responsible for pulling that off. And that would be Councilwoman Toles who called in some favors at her alma mater and got Litchfield recognized. So we do appreciate, we appreciate that for, of her because that's a big deal for those kids. And I think it's gonna be a really good experience for them as well.
Coach, I bet I'm the only one up here that didn't know you personally, but I was too damn blame old. I graduated from Gadsden High School and I played football in, in 1946. So, so I'm a little older than you are and I didn't have the honor of knowing you.
You know, with the Coach Baker brothers here, we, we gotta say something about them because if you know the family and been attending the basketball games when he was coaching, you heard those brothers of his up in the stands talking a little trash, so. I just wanted to say hey to them too.
All right, is there anything else? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.